King here, seems like we have a full house, so we will try to rip through some things to make good use of time. So as far as starting with our announcements, I guess I can read that. So our very own supervisor Pamela Robb was honored with the Humanitarian Award at the 50th Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Banquet at Penn State on January 15th. And so I was there, I'm sure some others here were there as well. It was a wonderful celebration and to get that surprise, it was just heartwarming and you know Pam, as the accolades and things were sort of like read off about just your history and your impact, it felt daunting to try to like, you know, be in the presence of that, but also really honor to witness that and be part of, you know, that journey as you continue, you know, building onto those accolades. So just very much appreciative of you and I don't know if other members have anything else to say.
I was just gonna say it took about 20 minutes to read them all. There was a very proud moment to see somebody that I know and have worked with very closely to receive that recognition. Well deserved.
So anyway.
Thank you.
Elliot?
Pam was a joy to work with when she was Chair and a joy to be on the board as a colleague for this last number of months. And I should have moved that closer there, then you could have heard me, but who would want to hear that?
Supervisor Robb, anything to say?
I just want to thank everybody for their accolades and it was a shock and truly I have come full circle from high school, having the Martin Luther King Scholarship, to receiving the Martin Luther King Freedom Medal, and now the Humanitarian Award. I have truly come full circle and I just want to thank everybody for their well wishes and congratulations. It means the world to me. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. And just notifying you all that the board will hold an executive session at the end of this meeting to discuss a personnel matter. Shifting into public comments, now is the time, if anyone has any comments they would like to have, remembering, you know, we're reservating and limiting time to about approximately five minutes or so for people. And if there's any comments related to anything on the agenda, if you can, you know, wait until that portion to discuss. So any public comments? Seeing none. Moving forward with some presentations. So we'll start, sorry, with discussion on the 2025 Lunar New Year. I know we have a proclamation. Do we want to give speech before that if anyone has any comments? Or do the proclamation first?
Why don't you have the proclamation read and then we can do the comments after?
Got it.
I apologize, my files just went down. So it is once again, my honor to be able to read the Lunar New Year, which was brought forward to us by Nalini Krishnakari, who I believe is going to speak. I know she's going to speak. I think it's very important to recognize this. It's personally important to me. My two daughters are from China and we have celebrated their birth culture regularly in our, in our, in our family. Proclamation for Lunar New Year 2025, whereas Lunar New Year predominantly celebrated by many communities of Chinese, Korean, Vietnamese, Tibetan, Mongolian, Singaporean, Malaysian, and Filipino descent, is a time of joy and renewal. Traditions across these cultures are varied, but all focus on celebrating and strengthening family and community bonds. And whereas the Lunar New Year, also known as Spring Festival, is based on the lunar calendar, which includes the Chinese zodiac or Sheng Xiao, a repeating 12-year cycle of animal signs and their ascribed attributes. And whereas, though the animal signs can vary across cultures, the Lunar New Year marks the transition from one animal to the next, with January 28th, 2025 ending the new year of the dragon, and January 29th, 2025, I think I said that, starting the year of the snake. The snake is the sixth of 12 zodiac animal signs, and those born in the year of the snake are often thought to be wise, caring, analytical, dependable. And just in case there's somebody entering this world in 2025. So we happen to know that there will be an additional young person that will be born in the year of the snake. Pardon me for that. And interjects.
I do beg.
And whereas, 10,000 Asian Pacific Island Desi-American, or often called PETA, residents live, work, and play across Center County communities, contributing to our economy and enriching the ethnic and social fabric of our community with multiple languages, cultures, and religious beliefs. Center County greatly benefits from the creativity, the enterprise, the skills, and diverse heritage of our residents. And whereas, like all major holidays across the globe, the Lunar New Year honors the eternal bond of respect, honor, and love for family, community, and country, and unites families over generations. And those celebrating Lunar New Year are our beloved friends and family, our cherished neighbors, and valued members of Patton Township. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the Patton Township Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim January 29th, 2025, as Lunar New Year in Patton Township, and encourages everyone to join in the spirit of celebration and reaffirm our community's commitment to family, diversity, mutual respect, and creating an inclusive environment of belonging for all our residents. Proclaim this 22nd day of January 2025 by the Patton Township Board of Supervisors, right here in Center County. That's me.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the...
So moved.
Okay, second.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Elliot, Supervisor, you want some?
Part of, part of my family is from Taiwan, and they're going to be visiting, starting tomorrow, our grandson, and his mom, and our son. And so they're looking forward to that. There is one downside to the Lunar New Year, and that is that on the last day of the thing, in 12 days or so, there will be no trips allowed to the moon. Does everyone know why?
No.
It'll be full.
All right. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. And then I know we have some comments from the public. So if you could, just stating your name and affiliation. Wonderful.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Nalini Krishnakuti. I'm a resident of State College. I also serve as an elected council member on the borough, and I am a founding member of the Panapida Circle of Center County, where APIDA stands for Asian Pacific Islander Desi-American. First, I want to congratulate my friend and colleague, Supervisor Pam Robb, for being awarded the 2025 Forum on Black Affairs Humanity Award. It's an honor so richly deserved, and you know, I really just want to thank you for your service. I had to write down the award, right? Because I wanted to get it right. So thank you. Thank you so much, Pam. Next, I want to thank all of you, the Board of Supervisors of Patton Township, for continuing the tradition of this proclamation. I think this might be the third or fourth year that you're doing this, and I want to thank you. And I also want to wish everyone celebrating the Lunar New Year on January 29th, you know, a happy Lunar New Year. This action is so meaningful at a time when so many of our underrepresented and marginalized communities are feeling vulnerable, and you are showing every resident of Patton Township that they matter, that every community of Center, member of Center County and their traditions are part of our rich and diverse American story. So thank you. With that, I just want to highlight, take a few minutes to highlight a few local events that are happening to expand awareness of Asian American culture. One is on February 2nd, 2025, from 2:30 to 3:30, there's a Lunar New Year celebration at Close Center Region Library with activities for children from kindergarten to fifth grade. And it's a couple of members of the Panapida Circle that are doing this, Grace Chang and Hyun Sun Kim. And they tell me that it's going to be fun, positive tables with Chinese crafts and activities of, that highlight Chinese and Korean culture. There's also an exhibit in the Belfond Art Museum. It's called, it's an exhibition of contemporary Korean art titled "A Letter from Korea," and that will feature husband and wife artist team from, from South Korea. And this is going to be from February 28th to April 27th. And so if you go to the Belfond Art Museum website, you'll also see along with that, there's an opening reception on March 2nd with food from the coop. On March 5th, there's going to be a curator talk, and then artist talk on April 26th. So there's just a lot of activities at that time. My very last announcement is that for, in April, for Asian American Month, APIDA Fest, for those of you who've been to it, will be back for the third year. The tentative date is April 12th. All are welcome to Downtown State College. We've had a big success in the first two years, you know, on Martin Luther King Plaza and Fraser Street. It's an event initiated by the students of Penn State, APIDA Caucus, in collaboration with the Panapida Circles, supported by Paul Robson Cultural Center and the Borough of State College. So true town gown event. There'll be amazing food and, you know, all kinds of crafts and activities. So hope to see you all there. And happy Lunar New Year again, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. Conservation Plan for the Haw Family Preserve and Grayse woods Preserve.
Could we get a picture, a photo, Amy?
Oh.
Is it possible to get a photo with the board?
Yep.
On this?
Hopefully I have a strong lens.
Strong.
Because I really can't.
Yep.
I was wondering who was going to take over Kim's job.
Right, so challenging. Of course, the photographer. Okay. Foundation to complete a conservation plan for the Haw Family Tract and also the Grayse Woods Preserve. Katie Amboski from Woods and Waters Consulting and her team actually completed the conservation plan. Members of our Open Space Committee are in the audience tonight. They've reviewed this plan over the last couple of months. They feel that it's ready to be approved by the Board of Supervisors. Katie's going to give an overview. We also have members of the Hamer Foundation in the audience tonight as well, because we are supremely grateful for their financial support for this project. So Katie, I'll let you take it over.
Terrific. And I'm here representing a team that I worked with, including Appalachian Forest Consultants, Western Pennsylvania Conservancy, Western Pennsylvania Conservancy, Pennsylvania Natural Heritage Program staff, it's mouthful. And we worked together to build out this conservation plan. And also, we've worked with Wilson Ecological Consulting on the wetland side of the house. So with that, so I just want to say before really getting into this, for, like Amy said, the members of the Hamer Foundation are here, and we have all been, we all have ties with Clearwater Conservancy, Pat Morse, Jennifer Shuey, Dan Crust, trustees of the foundation. We've been here since the beginning when, when the Haw Tract had not yet been conserved. And I just want to say, this is a program you should all be very proud of. You've conserved 652 acres of ecologically significant lands within the township, tremendous assets for the residents here, and it's just really something to be proud of. And this is the next step past the actual land conservation. This is planning. So, but your first program for anybody who's not, or property that anybody's not familiar was the Haw Family Preserve. It was conserved in 2007. It's 466 acres, split between forest cover and ag lands. The township was able to purchase this property at a bargain sale because the voters approved a referendum to essentially tax themselves. You got a bond for $2.5 million. The landowner donated $5.5 million of value to make this happen. And not only did they do that, they also then put $300,000 into an endowment, which used to be the Center County Community Foundation, now Center Foundation, to help with stewardship of that property. It was an amazing gift, not only from the landowner, but also the residents of the township for future generations. And it's under conservation easement to permanently protect the property moving forward. Excellent. And then the Grayse Woods Preserve, fast forward 10 years, the residents liked this, this project so much, this program, open space program, they did it again. They voted to tax themselves, $3.5 million voter-supported bond issue, in addition to a $750,000 grant from the Hamer Foundation to purchase the property, which was then conserved permanently, extra layer of protection with a conservation easement that's held by the Clearwater Conservancy. Next. And then finally, in 2019, Marge Seward, longtime donor and volunteer of Clearwater Conservancy, actually, upon her passing, bequeathed a 36-acre property on Bald Eagle Ridge. And so that's the most recent addition to the open space program. Tonight, we're not going to talk a lot about the Seward property. This, this effort started well before the property, that property was conserved. In 2018, the staff identified the need, okay, you've conserved these lands, we need to do the next thing, which is start really thinking about how we're going to steward these lands. And so we started a conservation planning effort that, it's, it's a big undertaking. This is your final document. I think you all have copies of it now. It's available on the township's website, as well as sort of the sister documents, the foundational documents of the forest management plan that covers both properties, and then individual wetland stewardship plans, one for each property. They're all on the township's website, accessible for anybody who'd like to look at those. And this planning effort, beyond the conservation of the property, was also supported by the Hamer Foundation to finance the planning, but also the beginnings of the implementation of the work that we identified the need to do, so in the plan. Excellent. So just to give you an idea of the context of this property, so we have Grayse Woods here. This is Grayse Woods Park, this additional outline, and then the Haw Tract is the property on the other side of the, what you said, the game lands. This is state game land 176, known as the Scotia Barrens locally. And you'll see there's a few other township park properties, Patton Woods, Circleville Park, and Grayse Woods Park, all sort of nested in there. But we made the decision early on that these two properties, Grayse Woods and Haw, should be planned together. Because if you can see, the only thing separating them is the game lands, and they're, you know, in the same setting, geologically, ecologically, hydrologically, it made sense to do it all at the same time. It would be more efficient for the township to do implementation. And when implementation occurs, the resulting conservation value, the outcomes should be maximized in that regard. So, next slide. So when we started, the Haw property had been in your ownership for quite some time now, and you had already started managing that property, had a forest management plan that was, basically all these plans are 10-year plans. It's about as long as you can do before things start changing you couldn't have planned for. All kinds of new opportunities and threats could have happened. So we tried to, you know, confine it to a 10-year planning period. So the Haw Family Preserve had a forest management plan. It was implemented, and it was based on township goals at that time. Other management that had occurred on the Haw Tract prior to us starting was some pollinator management, and this was done through a partnership with Pennsylvania Game Commission, US Fish and Wildlife Service, and Natural Heritage Program staff at Western Pennsylvania Conservancy, and really also at DCNR, the programs much larger than just the conservancy. But at Grayse Woods, when we started, this was the beginning. We were starting from scratch. There was, there were no management goals identified for the property at that time, and of course, there was no planning or implementation that had occurred under township ownership. So the first thing we did was we took the goals that were established for Haw, there was a lot of them. There was like 15 or 17, and some of them conflicted with each other. They weren't really prioritized. They don't necessarily need to be prioritized, but they, they needed to be consistent and concise so that we had very actionable, you know, we had a clear roadmap as to where, what direction we were trying to take both of these properties. So just to go through them quickly, maximize forest health and resiliency, protect and enhance wetlands, rural pools, and critical upland habitat. Critical upland habitat essentially is the forest land around the wetlands where animals generally are living most of the year around isolated wetlands. I'll explain them more later. Enhance habitat for rare threatened and endangered species. Encourage regenerative and sustainable agricultural practices. This is specific to the Haw property because there is a significant amount of ag land on that track. Conduct outreach to promote recreational use of open space properties. These, these properties were purchased largely with township dollars, so that needs to be something that's very intentionally worked through and planned for. Promote educational and research opportunities, and establish a long-term financial strategy for the open space program so that this work can continue through time. So real quickly, it's a kind of a three-part process. Once we have our goals, we identify the conservation values. What are we trying to protect on the property? Sometimes we call them conservation targets. In the conservation world, the strategy is you identify the rarity on the property, whether it's a habitat or the species that depend on it. And if you protect that, conserve it, enhance it, increase the resiliency of that, and you bring those rare species as, you know, forward as you can, all the common species follow. If you start in reverse, you often will lose the rarity on the property. So it's very important that you identify, like what are you really trying to conserve here ultimately? We identify the threats. I'm not going to go spend a lot of time on the threats tonight, but the ones that we identified as the primary issues, climate change, habitat loss, habitat fragmentation, lack of forest management, because this is a managed working forest in close proximity to people, needs to be managed. Loss of barrens and early succession habitats. This is a rare habitat type that if not managed for will succeed through time. So that's what it means by loss. Invasive plants, forest pests, think gypsy moths, hemlock willia deljid, emerald ashbore, insects that are non-native coming into the area that have a significant impact on the forests. Kitred fungus impacts amphibians, so these rural pools where all the amphibians live, it's a thing that we really have to be aware of. Recreational overuse, so not having a plan and not showing people how to recreate responsibly on the properties. Stormwater runoff. And then I've highlighted these last two just because I kind of want to put a point on them. Overrun up whitetail deer population. So you currently allow hunting on the open space properties, which is excellent. And it's exactly what needs to happen. It is one thing that you can do through policy. It's essentially free, and it is the most effective habitat management tool you have, that you have control over. So I just wanted to have a voice for, please don't change that, because you, your, your challenges will, the threats will just balloon if you don't allow hunting. And then change in agricultural use on the Haw Family Preserve. There's 230 acres of the 465 that are in ag. And it's not that that's going to change. There's no plan for that at the moment. We, we have not had conversations with the current leasee. We don't expect it to change. The easement specifically says agriculture is allowed to happen on the property and should continue as long as there's somebody who's interested in doing it. That, that's that last part that is the concern, is to make sure that if that leasee were to retire, not pass it on to somebody in their family, if you can't identify another leasee in time, you have 230 acres that now are not going to be managed for agriculture. And maybe it'll happen a little bit at a time. Maybe it won't happen in any of our lifetimes. We don't know. But you should have at least a conceptual plan of how, how would you react if you got a phone call tomorrow, so that you're prepared? Because it's a, you can't just let it go fallow. It would be engulfed by invasive species and colonized, but within, you know, a very short amount of time. So it's just something to be aware of. And then finally, we take that information and we develop management recommendations. Again, it's a 10-year plan. So the landscape context of the property. So now we're zoomed out. Before you saw Grayse Woods is that indenture into the game lands on the north side. You can see the darker polygon, that's the park. So basically, the preserve is connecting the park to the game lands. On the east side is Haw, and then you can see those other patent township parks over there. There, the, the purple parcels on the north side, that's in Half Moon Township, and that is their version of their open space program, where they do 100-year leases. And those are those properties. This map's about a year or so old, so there could be maybe a couple missing. I don't know. But that's what the purple is. The yellow, this color yellow, yellow, like yellow, those are agricultural easements that are in Ferguson Township. You know Ferguson Township has a, is a wealth of ag lands. Those are protected permanently with easements. On, on the, at least what you need to pay attention to here, this is Bald Eagle Ridge. These properties go up to the ridge. And on this side is Tassie Mountain. You basically have about 7,000 acres of protected, mostly forested land in the valley. You've added on to that big block. You're part of that, about 7,000 acres. It's unusual to have that kind of forested land in a valley. Ecologically, super important. The soils there are different. There are different forest types that are on the ridges and in, you know, the rigid valley. This is a jewel. That, that polygon around, that's kind of odd shaped, this one, that's a natural heritage area boundary. So the state has said, this is very important. Like for all the places across Pennsylvania, there are several of these, and they're saying this is very important because of the wildlife that lives here. Audubon, Pennsylvania is also designated an important bird area. State Mammal Technical Committee identified it as an important mammal area. You can't say enough about the importance of the Scotia Barrens region, which includes the open space program. So this is a landscape context in which we're talking about and planning for while we're developing the recommendations. Next. So the three priority habitats, forest barrens and wetlands. I'm going to dive in just a little bit, but just remember, when we talk about habitat, this, this is the home for this, the species that we're talking about, those rare species, right? And so I talked about the rarity, just to give you a sense for how many species. This isn't the common species. These are the species of, of concern. Some of these are listed state threatened and endangered. Some of them are federal. So, but some of them aren't listed yet, but they're in decline, and the, all the conservation agencies are watching these and trying to figure out how to manage for them so they don't continue to be on decline. 12 species of plants, 75 species of birds, two mammals, three reptiles and amphibians, 50 species of invertebrates. It's hard to get people to understand why an insect is important, right? But think pollinators largely. If, if you can't get your arms around why some insects are important, just think about pollinators. And then you, you know, just because we don't understand it doesn't necessarily mean it doesn't impact us if they were to go away. So, but pollinators, we can really, it resonates with people. But this gives you an idea of the tremendous diversity there that is uncommon. So for forests, combined, 230 acres of forested habitat that you've protected. It's both like oak and a mixed hardwood forest type, different age classes. Haw's been managed, Grayse Woods has not at this point, right? It's important habitat for many forest-dependent wildlife species. This is a fisher on the right as an example, which have been documented at Scotia. And then the, the thing that is really important to understand, I think too, is that inherently each property, the Grayse Woods and Haw Family Preserve are important for the Grayse woods and HAW family preserve are important for the habitats that you protected just of themselves. But what you did by identifying them as priorities and conserved, you have now buffered the game lands by 465 plus 150, can't do the math, minus 36 for steward. But, you know, that's a tremendous amount of protection that you afforded the game lands. Scotia barrens, very important habitat. And surely, these properties would have been developed. You know where they are. There was a plan for one. The other one was absolutely going to be developed. We're not stopping development, but these two places were that important to protect. So it's really something that I just wanted to emphasize. In and of themselves important, but you did something really great for a larger habitat block. Next. This is the cover of your forest management plan, available online on your website, prepared by Appalachian Forest Consultants, one of our team members. So again, this is, this plan is based on your goals. And the, so the HAW track was managed for 10 years. So the first thing we did was assess the outcomes of that management. How effective was it? Was it good? Did something bad happen? What can we build upon? What do we need to keep doing? You know, and understanding the health of the forest after 10 years of management. And then at Grayse woods, we did nothing. And so we went out and did a forest inventory and took all that information with your goals and created the forest management plan. And then that plan was rolled into the conservation plan. Next. So result of the plan, you have 12 management units on HAW. This tells you where those forested tracks are, just those color blocks. Some are isolated in the ag fields, but a lot of them are on the periphery. The main strategies for forest management are increasing forest resiliency. And just kind of the most obvious way to think about resiliency is just thinking about it perpetuating, right? So if you don't have little trees growing, you don't have tree regeneration, forest regeneration happening, you have a real problem. And that's where the deer can start to come in, and there's lots of other things. But forest resiliency is your primary objective here. Diversifying age classes because different age forests provide habitat for different wildlife species. Many are in decline. Increased structural complexity improves the habitat. And then again, we talked a little bit about pollinator habitat. I'll touch on it more later. There is some pollinator habitat management occurring here. And then what's important is the wetlands that you'll see a map of soon. When we do forest management, what's really important is that we protect that critical upland habitat. It's a big envelope, can be up to like 300 meters around each one of the pools. Because the animals that we're trying to protect that use those pools to breed, they're only there for a few days out of the year. They go in, they lay their, they lay their eggs and they leave. And then they spend the rest of the year out in the forest. So you have to take that into consideration when you're talking about forest management. And then for Grayse woods, there are four management units. And management units are basically you're identifying the forest type, generally trying to look for big blocks of similar, similarly aged or the composition of a forest, and that's a management block. And you manage that sort of movement, say moving forward at that big unit. For Grayse woods, we are not trying to diversify age classes. So go back just for a second to the game lands, state game lands 176. Out of the 6,500 acres about that it is comprised of, they manage actively about 2,000 acres for barrens habitat. The soils are right. They've identified the right places for where that should happen. We don't need to add on to it from the open space lands, right? They have it covered. What we want to do is protect the game lands from encroaching development and let them handle that. Now, there is a little bit, which I'll, again, I'll get to the pollinators in a minute and talk to you about how you're doing that work. But there is this, great, you can go see it on a future slide. There's a little bit of pollinator interest there. That is the former clay pit that's resulted from mining. But what we're trying to do here is go for this late successional age class. Okay? We're not looking at early, just not trying to diversify. The reason why it's 80 years old. Now, this is where you want to look at the context of where this property is located. It's all surrounded by game lands and then the park. The game commission is looking at late successional management on their property in very close proximity to Grayse woods. It makes all the sense in the world that you would also do the same there and build on that late successional management strategy. And you think, okay, well, how do you, can you buy time? You can't, right? So what do you do? There's, the game commission's working with the nature conservancy on this work on the game lands. And essentially what they're doing is they're advancing late successional habitat characteristics. And they're doing that through management, handwork only, cutting some trees, but the trees never leave the site. They are laid on the ground. They add to large wood debris on the forest floor, structural complexity. They're creating small canopy gaps, big enough where you can get a flush of new trees. So that regeneration. You're creating space for some, and you pick and choose where you do this. So for some canopies to get very large and tall, keeping snags, which are dead trees that are standing, great wildlife habitat. But all these different characteristics that happen through time just by natural events, we can accelerate them a little bit. It will be very passive. No equipment. It's not, it's not, it's not like you're going in doing a timber stand improvement and taking trees out for revenue. So that's, that's the strategy. But it's exciting because the game commission is on board for this. And they have this program called the 400 Areas Program where they are willing to work with publicly owned landowners to advance things that they think are important, right? Well, their goals are the same as your goals. Your goals are the same as their goals on this property. So it's a great partnership opportunity. And they bring technical, they add on to the technical expertise and the financial expense of doing this work. They'll do it for you. So we're in the process of talking with the open space stewardship committee and staff about like, how do we, okay, how do we get this enrolled? You're going to hear more about it throughout the year. But basically, what has to happen is this property management is going to get smoothed out considering how crazy it is. It was based on a road layout from the development that was supposed to happen in here. And so that's why it's a loop. But that'll get smoothed out so that it's, there's a clear boundary of where they'll help you manage and where they'll stay out of the park because the park's managed differently. And just notice, this is the township line. This is the half the township and the top of township, the property splits the middle. Okay? Okay, barrens. I just want you to think about this as young forest, okay? So this is that, it's, 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 the reason it's special is because it's a reflection of the unique soil types that are here. It causes a really stressed condition, growing condition. So you get this real scrubby habitat that you kind of see at the bottom. But what's really cool about the Scotia barrens is that this is one of the largest pitch pine scrub oak barrens plant communities in the state. It's big and it provides a lot of habitat and it's young habitat. And so there's a lot of species that really rely on these conditions. And rare plants grow here because of the soils. Rare plants, and you get rare insects, and it's a whole little ecosystem. And so I always said, it's young forest and really important for pollinators. Just examples, it looks scruffy. It's not like that beautiful forest old growth, you know? It looks scruffy, but if you know what you're looking at, you can start to see the beauty in a lot of the diversity. So something that was happening, to emphasize the point, something that was happening as we were doing this conservation plan, there was a project underfoot statewide, four locations, Scotia was one of four, to study barrens habitat and bees that rely on it. This was funded by the US Department of Agriculture and had several state partners involved, including Western Pennsylvania Conservancy, Conservancy Natural Heritage Staff. And their findings were tremendous. 100 different species of bees in the Scotia region on the, on your properties and on the game lands. Two were globally vulnerable bumblebee species. That means they're really in decline. Five state records, never seen in Pennsylvania before. 11 county records, never seen in center county before. And then 12 specialists, so think monarch milkweed. You know, there's a clear connection. They need, they need the milkweed. These bees need these specific plants. They require the pollen or the oils to carry on their life cycle. So here's an example of one of those bee species, first state record, and it relies on this potentilla species that's found at the game lands, a barrens plant that likes the soil types that are there. Next. So I had said at HAW, there was some pollinator management. You know, we're not going to go in and try to create lots of barrens habitat, but there is some that exist there because there's a power line. So this is like making lemonade out of lemons. We have a power line, generally the thought of as fragmenting features. But in this case, because it's on barren soils, has the potential to be serving, providing barrens habitat if it's managed right. Things done at the right time, you're not putting pesticides down at the wrong time, you know, just cognizant. So about eight years ago, I think it was, West Penn, game commission, US Fish and Wildlife Service, and Western Pennsylvania Conservancy Patent Township, because you agreed to this on your property, said, yeah, let's do it. Let's try to see if we can improve this habitat. And we're going to do it for this species right here, which is state in danger and currently being considered to be federally listed as endangered. This frosted elephant butterfly relies on wild yellow indigo. So the trick is, how do we get wild, more wild yellow indigo to grow in these power lines? Very intentional management. And so it's not just the power lines. This is, this is your property line. So this is state game lands 176. So it's occurring here as well on the power line and the bigger buffer. Gets onto your property, it's Orket Pond up here, it's off the property. There's some openings that were developed. We'll let management out of the power line, but basically the power line right away up to Circular Road. It's a really awkward management shape, you know? But it's a power line and it's working. They're getting lots of wild yellow indigo to grow. And they're seeing some frosted elephant. We don't know if it's going to work for actually making a viable population that will sustain through time, but we're going to try. And so after eight years of doing this work, we're recommending that habitat gets extended across Circular Road on the rest of the power line up to the water authorities, at the end of that, is the water authorities water tower. So they could be another partner that gets brought into this partnership. It's all about collaboration to make this stuff happen. And then that other orange area at the bottom, that's an area that's right along, sort of at the intersection of forest and fields. And when that happens, there's like areas that kind of get neglected. They just don't, you know, the canopy's growing over, the farmer's not using it. There's some slope, there's a corner there that's basically fallow, and there's wild yellow indigo that's showing up. And so we want to try to enhance that. So, so we're recommending to enhance the pollinator habitat on HAW, really targeting these species. Again, you target this and other species will benefit, those bees is a good example. They would benefit from the actions that we take for the frosted elephant. Next. Grayse woods, okay, purple doesn't show really good here, but there's this clip that I mentioned before. The target here, the target there is tiger beetles. There's five species of tiger beetles in Pennsylvania. Some of them were thought to be more rare than they are. Down to one that's really of conservation concern. It's the eastern big sand tiger beetle at the bottom. These are fascinating animals. They dig like these pits in the sand. They wait for somebody to crawl by and fall in the pit. It's their demise. But there's, because of the sand, that this is really not really impacted for mining. It's not going to, you're not going to turn that back in the forest, but it hurts. It's like Steve Sandy's close. It's a great place to try to encourage habitat tiger beetles, whether it's the non-listed ones, but really that listed one is what we're hoping. It's nearby, and so maybe it could show up here. It's not a big management action, but it's a, you know, in terms of expense, but it's, it's a, it's a thing. And then there's also a power line that cuts through here, which we don't have these high-level targets for, but it's more about keeping invasive species low. So there may be a little bit more pollinator habitat management on Grayse woods, but it's mostly that old growth work that we're focused here. Next. And then finally, wetlands. There are 45 wetlands on your property. That's amazing, that's a lot. And some of them are a result of mining. So what? They're functioning as really high-quality vernal pools, some of them. Which means that, some of them dry out, some of them don't. Generally, vernal pool will dry out seasonally, keeps fish from colonizing them. There's, these are not connected to any streams. These are totally isolated. Lots of amphibians breed in them. And we used to do vernal pool tours there all the time. Fascinating to watch and a lot for the neighbors, like the kids, little kids. I'll never forget the one, this little girl came out and she said, daddy, look, it's a leech. And she had a leech stuck on her hand. So it gets the kids out and they're not afraid of these things, you know? So this is a great educational opportunity to teach people about wetlands, importance to all kinds of things. The one that you're probably most familiar with is 10 acre pond. It's sometimes 18 acres. It's just, we, for some reason, got the name 10 acre pond. Probably the longest-running study of dragonflies and damselflies in the nation happens here. And the diversity that's been documented there is mind-blowing. But most of the time, what we're talking about, we talk about these isolated wetlands, these sort of vernal pool-like wetlands, these white claws. If you hear those are spotted salm and their eggs. They come in every year, a couple days, lay their eggs, leave. Next. Covers of your wetland stewardship plans that are available on the website. Again, they're 10-year plans done by Wilson Ecological Consulting. And then this is just what it looks like, so you can understand where these things are. That's your 10 acre slash 18 acre pond. But they're everywhere, right? And so the strategies for management is trying to maintain with forested buffers. A lot of them are in the forested blocks as management units, so that's good. The reason there's an asterisk is some of them are in the ag fields. I don't, you know, we say buffer all wetlands. I don't know that that'll happen. But we can look at it. And we can look and see if, are there any that the farmer says, yeah, I didn't ever get anything off this area anyway because it's always wet? And does that make sense? Is it close enough to the edge where you could suck it into the forest or not? It's a, it's something to look at maybe in a few years. And again, protecting that critical upland habitat so that those animals that breed in those isolated wetlands don't get impacted by forest management. And then at Grayse woods, this is really interesting. During the great, the development of the Grayse woods plant community, this park parcel was conserved as park for the development. And it includes many of, we typically refer this as the Grayse woods wetland complex. Most of them are in the park and it's managed differently. When we did the forest assessment and the wetland assessment, we did it for both properties. And basically, that information is available to the park program to use as they see fit. Hopefully, in time, we'll just keep working together more and more and more. It's kind of funny you think about cross-boundary management when you're talking about your municipality, but it is because there's different management goals. But the biggest cross-boundary management is opportunities with game lands. But, so again, it's buffering, that's pretty much conserved. Check in that critical, this, the preserve is really functioning as the critical upland habitat for the park. There are stormwater concerns that need to be addressed. There's a road that goes through here, Flushing Way, goes through the park and actually out towards the water authority well field is the access road. There's some issues there that need to be addressed. They're not like massively significant, but they should be addressed. And then there are some stormwater issues that are happening from the Grayse woods plant community. And we're trying to figure out how do we just minimize that and work with the regulators. It's all under permitting, mostly. And so those are concerns. So we take all this information, the conservation targets, the forest assessment, the plan, the wetland stewardship plans, we take all that information, the threats, and we look at your goals and we create recommendations to advance these goals. I'm not going to go into all the recommendations because it's like 10 pages in the back of the book. It starts on page 68 and you can peruse through them. I'm just going to touch on what we're going to do this year. You can, before I do that, what I want to do is just emphasize, you are not in this alone. Like it's a lot of property. You have, I don't want to say lofty goals, you have excellent goals, but it's going to take work to meet them, right? It's going to take money, it's going to take capacity, it's going to take dedication to keep moving these properties forward and truly conserving the resources that you set out to protect by purchasing those properties. But there's people that are here to help you do that. And so one of them, again, I'll mention, that Pennsylvania Game Commission 400 Areas Program. Right now, we're just talking about it for Grayse woods. Maybe someday, HAW too, but that's a conversation for a different day. But that's huge. You're getting technical and financial assistance. We're estimating, and we won't know until it's kind of like you need the hindsight to know for sure exactly based on what we find as we move forward, at least $50,000. At least $50,000 probably have helped, because they're going to do invasive species management, and they're going to do that late succession of forest management. That pollinator management partnership on HAW, many partners, again. You know, the Water Authority's just another partner, ready to cultivate, to add into that. And you pay very little, if anything, to do that management on the HAW property. And the Beast of Barren Study, that's just an example of one research project that brought you a wealth of information and starts to show you how to move forward through time with your management goals. So just as three examples that are very relevant as we finish this plan. So your plan for 2025. The idea is to take all these recommendations, and every year, the open space stewardship committee will meet, create a work plan based on what's happening at the time, your financial resources, your capacity, partnership interest, whatever. And you're going to determine what you can feasibly do for that year. So this year, a lot of stuff's kind of underway, partners involved, and there's a lot going on here, but these are the management priorities for the year. Finalizing that 400 areas contract. Get that thing going so that the Game Commission can start to help you implement, hopefully this year, pollinator management on the HAW family preserve. Every year, there's, partners look at what the current status is of that power line area. Now, we're going to extend it. How do we keep moving that forward? Little expense to the township. Completing the invasive species management that's already under contract with the, on the HAW farm. It started this year, it'll finish in 2025. Started last year, will finish in 2025. And then, once that's done, there'll be an assessment to see, okay, how well did it work? Do we miss something? Did a new species come in? Whatever it is, so that you have something to budget for, the need is identified for the next couple years to follow, 2026, 2028, maybe. And then there are forest management recommendations for HAW that could be done this year if your forester says it's okay. So he's going to go into those places and say, okay, I said you should do this? Now, let's look at it once the growing season hits and make sure that it actually is ready to go. And if not this year, maybe next year. And that could generate revenue for you, potentially, likely. And that, but the one thing that will happen there, one of the recommendations, is that a deer exclusion fence is going to go around MUL. That's that, that one management unit that I said, with the pollinator work, we're hoping to take it there. There was a big cut there. It used to be a conifer plantation, it was removed. It's not regenerating like you want it to be. So we've got to put up a deer fence and start to work on getting that forest to be more resilient. And then finally, and I think this is a pretty exciting thing, this is all habitat stuff, is developing a recreation plan for all three. Now, this is where the sewer comes back in at the end, sewer preserve. All three properties, we're recommending that they be assessed, like what trails are there, what opportunities are there. You've got to think about, you can't really put, you know, trails that go off your property onto a private or public land without involving those people. That happens all the time. But looking at opportunities, teaching people how they can use those properties responsibly. You'll have stuff on your website, create maps, whatever it is. That's to be determined, but creating that recreational plan for all three properties. That's it. Any questions?
All right. Actually, before we get to comments, questions, I'll actually accept a motion to approve the conservation plan for the HAW family preserve and the Grayseeds Woods preserve.
I'd like to make that motion. This is one of my favorites, Katie did all the work on. I'd like to make the motion that we accept the conservation plan as given to us in the booklet and as summarized here by Katie. It's really monumental work, not just for patent, but Senator County of the world. Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Got it.
Supervisor Abrams. Just thinking about all the different things that are intertwined with this. For example, on the HAW tract itself, what is at work? I remember when Betsy Dupree's dad was on the board, he pointed out to us that no land in Patent Township had ever sold at more than $1,000 per acre. We're way, way past that now. And the property that's there that the township now has is worth much, much more than the base pay. And also, the environmental aspects of it. If you've ever heard Kane Brown's song, where he's talking about his little daughter sitting in the backseat of his car, and she says, squirrels have houses in the trees. Why do, and why do bees have stingers? And then, I forget what the third one was. But in any case, through our entire culture, this kind of thing shows up. I support the preserve.
Any other comments, questions? I felt like I sat through a master class. I mean, there was a lot of information, and I think you presented it in a very effective way. And for people, person who isn't as knowledgeable around these issues, the fact that, you know, you discuss, you know, at least in Patent Township, the, you know, diversity in animals and plants, and, you know, the ways in which, like, we're sort of like known. It's known based on a research, you know, capacity, among other things. And so there's a degree of pride that sort of came from like witnessing this presentation, and I'm ready to support, you know, more efforts to, you know, bolster, you know, that pride that sort of like I felt. So thanks, thanks for that. All right, without further ado, we have a motion on the floor that has been seconded. All in favor to approve this motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays? Abstentions? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Can I make one comment? I didn't pack one with me.
Can you come to the microphone, please?
I'm not comfortable with this. I just wanted to make one comment, and that is, as you work through the plan, if you find it appropriate, we're offering to participate with you. So it's, you know, there's potential funding available for you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much. I, can we actually make a shift in the order of things and move to planning? Jump down and move to some planning stuff? I know we have some individuals who need to get out of here. And so let me get there myself. Amy, where are we looking at?
So if we would just want to go, since Jenna has to get over to Harris Township, if we just want to move item six, all of those planning items up now, and then we'll go back and catch up the long-range transportation plan. So that, we went out short, changed that discussion. I want to make sure she gets there in time. So the first item would be the Planning Commission report. And we do have our Planning Commission chairman here to give the report.
And thanks, everyone in the audience, for bearing with us. We will continue to try to move as quickly as possible.
Well, I'm happy that you're doing this now, because that moves me out of here quicker, too. I understand Jenna's feelings. I, most of you know me, in fact, you've all been on board since I've been on the Planning Commission, just as a week up. Yeah, I stepped into the big shoes that Rich left us. So I am now the chairperson of the Patent Township Planning Commission. Still your representative to CRPC, and also CRPC's representative to the MPO, which I've heard the long-range traffic plan. So it's going to be an interesting presentation by Jenna. We'll be working on several projects this year. Hopefully, we'll get traction and actually get one to the end. We have the big lift of assisting the board with the short-term rentals. I'm just going to say.
Stay tuned.
Thank you.
That's, we've already seen some comments from those people that are going, by those individuals that are already running short-term rental programs of some kind or another, and they already have questions. I've done my best to not give any answers. Yeah, this is the process. It moves this way, and it's a feature, it's not a bug, it's a feature of government. So we have that. Of course, we're always working on workforce housing. That's always been the big one. I think that's been the big, heavy lift that I've been on since the start. In fact, when you were the president or the chairperson of this council, you tasked us with looking into that. And we are moving along, and we've done a lot with CRPC and explaining to individuals and families and groups what the costs are of living here. And when we talk about workforce housing, realistically, what does that mean? And people are very surprised to find that we are talking about Penn State professors, starting professors, level of earning when we're talking about workforce housing. That's not even getting into our own roadspeople, our own engineers, our own people that we need to function. In fact, one of my friends has taken one of the jobs as a firefighter. You know Mr. Fletcher. And, you know, we need to make sure that Patent Township is affordable to all. I mean, we say that it's a place for all. We need to make sure that we at least have affordable options for all. Whether you want the $5 million home, that's great, we have those properties. But we need those homes that are going to also be available to people who are here working, who are here cooking, who are here cleaning, who are here clearing the roads. By the way, thank you very much for all you've done during that wonderful time. I'm so happy I didn't go sliding down Skytop Road this year or yet. So everybody's doing a great job there. But those are the big tasks that we have ahead of us. In addition, we have a pet project that was started by our wonderful Amy Farkas of working on a corridor traffic study of North Atherton. And moving from the current setup where it's, where it was sort of envisioned as a light, everybody getting to everywhere, to now more of a limited-access highway due to speeds, the amount of traffic, and we're not even talking on a game day. On a game day, it's nearly impassable until about kickoff. So, and I'm sure Chief Jolly can testify to that. Yes, we have sent to you a issue that is going to be talked about later of a use of a drive-through. I've been assured that we're not going to be looking at another Chick-fil-A issue. But I just want to give you the warning, and, you know, giving Chief Jolly praise there, just sort of triggered the, oh, yeah. So that was presented to you.
Right, but I'm not adopted.
Okay. So just really quick, we have the JN Outdoors. I know that's going to be presented by Ryan Nagel. The committee actually recommended approval of the plans, Resolution 2025-03. Again, we had some concerns. We kicked it over to staff, and we were willing to let it go as long as staff's concerns were oftentimes, you know, I have found that the best thing to do is, if staff has, if it's something technical, staff is really going to help us out on that. And as long as we get the technical stuff ironed out, in most cases, we're going to approve it in most cases. We also discussed the Phase Four of the Nittany Valley View Villas. I believe that's going to be Pentera doing their presentation on that, so. The guy right there? John? Oh, hi. So I believe we, we had, yes, we recommend approval of the plans. And staff has marked up their comment letter on that. Yes, the conditional use, drive-through. I will say, I am always concerned right now about drive-throughs just because of Chick-fil-A. We've had a special relationship of the Chick-fil-A, you know, issues. They've done a tremendous job by actually getting a double lane. So we have also approved that, but my always, my concern always comes down to, what is the throughput? And as long as the staff, or as long as whatever restaurant is going there and going to be there has the ability to get their throughput through and they're not parking cars there, it's not going to be a problem. But it's always, you always have to know, how many cars can they get through in an hour? And then what happens if they are super-duper successful? Or we have another COVID-like incident where everybody's driving in cars to get their food and not going into restaurants? So that is going to be an issue for you guys to discuss tonight. And it's, it does have the ramifications that if it is approved that year, it's going to run forever with the land. So, but we've approved it, we've recommended to the board to approve it, but that is one caution that I present to you. And then the 2025 Commission work plan, as we've already discussed, of workforce housing, of other. I'm just blind-winking here. What else should I say? Do you have a joke?
No, you're doing, you're doing great.
You're good.
All right. With that, I guess I will turn it over to, do you want me to turn it over to Jenna?
Jenna, yes.
All right, Jenna. It's all for you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
I'll be honest, our chair did a lot of my work for me. All right, so we have JN Outdoors preliminary final subdivision of tract 3RR. Lands of JN Outdoors. This property is located along Meeks Lane. It's 18003044. It is zone agriculture, A1. So currently, it is 24.34 acres. The applicant is proposing to subdivide 1.25 acres off of this 24-acre parcel and have a shared driveway. As you can see, highlighted in the yellow, as my mouse is going by, it is shared by the existing property over here on the left. Part of the subdivision, they right now are proposing a single-family home to be constructed here. They did submit a sewage planning module, and it has been reviewed by the SEO and CRPA staff. We are recommending approval of that planning module. That will be after this formal action on the subdivision plan. We will have the resolution for the planning module as well. I'm happy to answer any questions about this.
Can I actually entertain a motion first? Or a second?
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? Supervisor Whitman?
I guess stating the obvious. I know the slope is an issue further east on that. Our request is not an issue.
Yes. So all the improvements on the property are staying off of the steep slopes. The township does not permit any development on slopes greater than 25%.
Great, okay, thanks.
All right. No other questions, reactions? We have a motion on the floor. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Abstentions? Motion passes.
So along with this subdivision plan, we have a Resolution 2025-03. It's approving the Component Two Planning Module, so as a sewage planning for this subdivision. So the applicant has identified essentially an off-site septic system that will be suitable for this newly created lot, meeting DEP requirements. So essentially, this is the official action of the board amending our Act 537 plan, acknowledging that proper sewage maintenance has been identified, backup site, et cetera, to support this proposed.
I will entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Elliot has a question.
Supervisor Abrams.
I don't know exactly where this is with respect to where the planned major sewer line that the sewer authorities building. Is it going to be near this?
So there is no sewer, public sewer, proposed for this property. They will have on-lot septic, so an individual septic for this 1.25 acre property.
Any other questions, comments? All right. There's a motion on the floor. All of those who agree with the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
All right, now, Phase Four, Nittany View Villas, the Village. This is the preliminary final land development plan. So this is located along Fox Hollow Road. It is parcel 18004043A. This property, the whole property crosses the Patent Township and College Township line, as you can see on the map. It is zoned UPD, which is the University of Pland District. That is a shared zoning amongst some of the state college municipalities here, and the I-99 interchange overlay district. And this whole parcel is 50.17 acres. The site that we are looking at is outlined in orange that you can see up on the top left side of this. So the plan is proposing two buildings totaling 20 independent living units and 43 parking spaces to be provided to serve those units. I have that asterized because waiver was previously submitted and granted to reduce the required parking stalls for the entire community by 50. So that is part of this whole idea of having a large planned community, sharing uses, recognizing that some may, some parking spaces may be needed while others may have other means of addressing those parking issues. So with this plan, they are adding 43 additional parking spaces. They did get a waiver for the overall community, so they are right now at 46 parking spaces of that 50 that they were originally waived. And it was a waiver, I'm going to look to John Sett, I want to say 2009, was when the board took action on that initial waiver for this planned community. So this is multiple phases, and that was part of the board's wishes at that time to waive 50 parking spaces. They are meeting all other township requirements, all other outstanding comments, our administrative nature, signatures, et cetera, but we are recommending approval of this plan as well.
Okay. Before discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
So move to approve.
I'll second.
Discussion, Supervisor Abrams.
Has the parcel and the parking area been carefully checked to make sure that it's not going to be a hazard in terms of snow and ice that can't be removed from the, easily from the streets? It's an area where falls are a very tough problem for people, that age group. And so if you have parking places where they're dumping snow instead of moving it away, it just adds to the problem.
I believe the applicant may or may not be here. That more goes to the actual management of the site and not township ordinances, per se. John, or anyone else? Any comments?
I'm John Sett from Penshawar Engineering, representing the Village Project. We are eliminating six parking stalls down at the intersection of the proposed driveway coming in, so that's a place that will be able to store snow. They will not be used as parking spaces anymore. Also, at the end of the driveway, the parking area, the pavement area on the upper side of that building, there is an embankment there, a three-to-one embankment that's known to be able to be placed there as well, as well as along the driveway coming in. And the driveways have all been designed, the sidewalks at 5%, so they're not steep grades going up into the site.
Great. Any other comments, questions? All right. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
I have a quick question that I couldn't quite get in quickly enough. Can I ask it?
Sure.
So I guess Mr. Sett?
Yes.
Sorry. I just have a Google map here. Is that, is this current build-out, the last build-out? Because I'm seeing a lot of other property around that.
There were some smaller areas that could house additional units in the future.
Okay.
But there are no plans at this time.
Okay, cool. Just curious. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, and now, let John get out of here. I queue up the next pair of white.
It comes to the drive-through.
Yes, the drive-through. Yes, the drive-through, as our lovely chair alluded to. All right, so I will start out with tonight that this is not the public hearing for the conditional use. We will properly advertise that for your February meeting. I'll go into what that exactly means for staff, and make sure that all of our i's are daunted and our t's are crossed. So we're kind of just going to talk about this. I do have the planning commission's recommendation included. They did see this at their meeting last week. They are part of the process to review and provide a recommendation to the board, so they have concluded that part of the process. So what is a conditional use? So it's a land use that is permitted in a specified zoning district and one that is subject to special requirements. It may be that these uses have significant impact, given their location, and it may require additional safeguards and review by the governing body if you wish to permit that. So please know that these are uses that are permitted. Most zoning districts include conditions that must be met in order to receive that approval. And in addition to this process, as the governing body during that public hearing, you can include additional conditions as well, as long as they are in line meeting the health, safety, and welfare. So in this example, I use the Subplanning Commission. This is a Kava restaurant. Your condition cannot be, I don't like Kava, and I want this to be a Dunkin' Donuts. It has nothing to do with the health, safety, and welfare necessarily. All right, so the MPC authorizes the governing body to hear and decide on this application for a conditional use. So during this public hearing, you are acting as a quasi-judicial body. So very similar to the zoning hearing board, you can't advocate for a particular position. It will be a public hearing, it will need to be opened, you will need to have a discussion. Findings of facts have already been completed by staff. We already have all the attachments supporting everything that we found throughout this process, and Planning Commission's recommendation will be included in that as well, just to document that they did get a review of this, and that will be all in one big package in front of you for your February meeting for the public hearing. But, so, the public hearing requires public notice and a written decision to be provided to the applicant, so public notice, very similar to zoning hearing board. It is two consecutive weeks of advertising of this public hearing, no greater than 30 days, no less than seven from that date of the public hearing. In addition to that, we have to go one step further. Staff, we get to go out and post the property that will be in question for the public hearing. So we get to go out and get dirty. So that, yes, and very cold, so hopefully we can find a way to get that thing in the ground. So as I already pointed out, you have the ability to add additional conditions if you, during this process, identify an issue and a concern that you would like to be addressed that is completely within your purview. I already discussed the public notice, no less, never than 30, no less than seven. Additionally, after you have that public hearing, I'm on a time clock to do the write-up, signing, and getting this back to the applicant in a certain amount of time, so it is a very fast turnaround on this one. Additionally, we have to have this public hearing within 60 days of receiving that application, so there's a few extra hoops with these types of uses. Nothing unbearable, though. But part of that, I also get to provide the written decision personally delivered is my preferred preference for this one. Luckily, Pantera is not that far from my office, so I can easily get there. But the public hearing that you will have in February, that is for the drive-through use request. So the subject is for 1752 North Atherton Street Associates, so this is your patent crossing development along North Atherton Street. The whole area is approximately 28 acres, and we are focusing on a phase of that. So this property, it's zone planned commercial, and then you have the mixed-use overlay two on top of that. So within that mixed-use overlay, that is where your conditional use for drive-through comes into play. It is only required in that zoning district. So there are some ordinances where they may say for all landfills, anywhere where they are permitted, must go through conditional use for patent township. It's specifically related to this mixed-use overlay district, and that's because it is a planned district, you have a mix of residential uses, a budding commercial, to have that sort of live-work type of atmosphere, walkable community. So as I will go through the conditions that are included in your zoning ordinance, you will notice that there is a lot related to this pedestrian car interactions in these conditions for this use. So the plan, which I want to stress, it is separate from the conditional use. Conditional use is more of the zoning approval. This is to allow the zoning officer to say, yep, this is a permitted use, we went through the conditional use process here. Land development for the 2,500 square foot restaurant is just your regular old land development plan that you all are used to reviewing and approving. So this specifically is in the Phase 2B of the Patent Crossing Master Plan, and it's located at the northeast corner. I would get comfortable with this process because there are two other pads in this phase, and they both have drive-throughs on them. So we will be doing this again.
Drive-throughs, oh, thank you.
Yes. So they will be, potentially will be doing this again. So they are requesting a conditional use approval for the proposed drive-through of this restaurant, and the conditions, there are a lot. I will read most of them off for you. So drive-throughs must be clearly shown on the master plan for the site, they are, to minimize disturbance of residential units in mixed-use structures. They have, drive-through uses are only permitted to operate between the hours of 6:00 and 11:00, 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Again, having that residential, commercial interaction, limiting that type of use and the time that it can be open helps with that. Drive-through uses shall be cited in a manner that minimizes disturbance to adjacent residential uses and all related buildings and drive aisles. So drive-through uses shall not compromise pedestrian convenience, safety, or detract from the overall walkability of this district. And they have certain specs for the drive-through lanes, so that's queuing lengths, et cetera, et cetera, that the applicant, part of their application, they did provide a plan showing that they are meeting those requirements. So these are the conditions that are included in your zoning ordinance that the applicant must meet in order for this to be approved, and they are meeting all of them. Staff, we reviewed that, we looked at them. Let's see, so we have, it is consistent. We did take this planning commission last week on the 13th. They identified the same issue that staff did. We chose to address it through the land development plan process, and Planning Commission would like that to be part of the conditional use as well. And once I get to the plan, I will show you the concern that Planning Commission and staff have identified through this process. So this will be the findings of facts. It's essentially everything that is required. Typically, they're done for zoning hearing boards, but it's just to document the whole process through and through. How did we get here, et cetera, et cetera? Are they meeting these conditions? Who did the review? Are conditions being recommended, et cetera, et cetera? Past staff's exhibits and all the requirements that we are supposed to have per the MPC included in this. You'll see Pantera's cover letter, so that is essentially, patent township does not have a conditional use application. We should probably make one. So we had Pantera essentially answer a bunch of questions for us. They submitted this, their responses essentially proving that they are meeting all the conditions that are included in your ordinance, as well as the site plan showing specifically the specs of that last section of your zoning ordinance. So the problem identified by Planning Commission and staff is this area right here. So you can see the cars will come in, they will come out, and we have this little area right here where we have individuals that can, to a certain point, be driving this way to park, and they stop, they are stopped here, and we have cars coming out. So there is this area right here that Planning Commission and staff have addressed concerns with, that has been included in our land development review comments as well, and I know that the applicant is working to address those concerns.
Have any changes been made to the plan since you've given these considerations?
The plan, I don't believe has been resubmitted yet. I would need to double-check. I think it went out Friday.
My concern is that we're being asked to, we've got a history of maybe My concern is that we're being asked to, we've got a history of maybe having some mistakes with parking areas, and not from necessarily anybody in this room that is proposing this, but I think we have to be very careful about it. And if there's already been a concern about the parking and the movement of traffic within the facility, I think this should really be looked at again, because once it's there, you don't have people, you don't have people run over or injured or whatever because of mistake.
Yep, that is an excellent point, as I know the chair has voiced. The other beauty of conditional uses, these conditions, once met, they are enforceable. So, at any point in time, if a complaint comes in and we are notified of an issue there, we have an ability now to enforce it because they aren't meeting the conditions of their approval. And as I pointed out, while we may not necessarily see a future problem, these two other pads that you're seeing here, that is where the proposed other drive-through uses will be, and there will also be a conditional use process for both of them. So ideally, there's enough opportunity here if an issue arises with this one. Specifically, Kava's business plan, they do pickup only, you can't order from their windows, so you are going there, you've ordered online, called in, et cetera, you were just there to pick up food, and that is great, and it may work. And as the Chair of Planning Commission did mention, once a conditional use is approved, that runs with the land. So, Kava could go out of business next month, and there could be a Dunkin' Donuts here. So, those are things that we are aware of as staff. I think the biggest thing that, if we do have that queuing issue that Patent Township is very familiar with, one of those conditions is you cannot block a travel lane, which I know that is something that will be enforceable through this process.
Jenna, so, but the board, let me go back to the first issue which was raised by staff and Planning Commission. The board can still make it a condition of this approval to, that they have to address the ADA parking and the potential conflict there in the land development process.
Yes.
And then, my next question is, this particular drive-through is not going to have a kiosk where you make orders and order the window, but a subsequent, there's nothing in this process that would prevent a subsequent purchaser或operator from reverting back to what we consider the traditional standard? Is there, but the board can put a condition that this is, this approval is only for this kind of particular use, which is that you are not having an order station, you know, these people are just picking up? And then, my last question, and I appreciate your comments about what you can and cannot look at a conditional use process, but given that there are going to be three, potentially three drive-throughs in the same vicinity, and while we have some of that in this community, we largely have conflict issues, and considering that, as Mr. Abrams pointed out, we have a development which only has one drive-through and consistently has traffic problems in its own parking space, and I'm not talking about the one that you're all frustrated about, I'm talking about folks lining up to get coffee at three o'clock in the afternoon, and their lane comes back in, and essentially, that whole travel lane has been redone multiple times. And so, I'm just wondering, when do you get, when do you, as planning staff, get to see some kind of internal traffic plan about what it might look like with those other uses? Because I, what I understand about drive-throughs is limited, but I do understand that there is traffic data about stacking and uses, and of course, Chick-fil-A completely blows that out of the water. But it's no different than a car wash that has stacking requirements and how quickly those cars can be moved through a automated car wash. When do you guys get to see that? Or, and if the answer is we don't, then I guess, how does the board protect itself from problems in the future? Because I, I understand plans are enforceable, I understand you do all that stuff, nobody wants to go in after the fact, we've lived it through Chick-fil-A, right? We've lived through that process, so, it's alright.
Yeah, so, required with the land development plan, we do get the traffic analysis that was provided to the traffic engineer. Internal staff, we were actually waiting for any concerns to be identified by the traffic engineer, and he did not know any in his review of the plan.
And that wasn't forecasting for the other establishments that are going to be there?
I would assume that was a requirement for those as well, yes.
But for this particular plan, they would not have had to provide a traffic analysis?
They did.
Oh, they did?
Yep.
For the other developers coming in later?
Yes, it is a requirement for that traffic impact analysis. Honestly, I think internally, staff, we were expecting a comment to come back, and we did not get any concern from the traffic engineer on the current layout.
Yeah, I don't, actually, can we just make a, because at this point, we can't dictate or stipulate anything right now.
There's really nothing going on tonight.
We just, just to introduction, so, can, we actually, can I get a motion first before we get into the weeds?
We actually don't need a motion on this one at all, this is just discussion.
Oh, okay.
You'll actually take action on it at your February meeting.
Got it. The motion should be made to schedule a public hearing.
Yeah, to schedule the public hearing, that's all you have to do, so if you want to make that motion, that's fine.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Yep, so, I'll take a motion, as written.
So, move to schedule a public hearing.
Got it, second.
Where, is that February?
February twelfth.
For February twelfth.
I'll second, but I do have a question.
Okay. Supervisor Abrams?
Um.
We have a motion on the floor?
We, first, we have a first and a second, right? So, I can ask a question?
Yeah, I'm just making it clear that we're, yeah.
Okay. So, it sounds like this is more like the situation they have at the Olive Garden, where you could call in for an order, and then you went to a specific place in the lot, and then they brought the food out to you. I thought they did a good job of that, I never really saw it be congested. Of course, I'm not there all the time, but it certainly wasn't anything like the problems we've felt elsewhere. And so, but with this, I think we need to make sure there's enough room for people to park there while they're waiting for their stuff to come out.
And that's the thing with the Olive Garden, there's a lot more parking spaces, and I think the, yeah, and I think the spaces that they had where they were bringing it out to people, it was sort of like situated away from the primary, sort of like traffic areas.
Right.
Yeah, this is weird and concerning to me, like, just like, I'm not an expert, but just looking at, you know, the, the environment, it just seems like that's going to be very congested, yeah.
So, I'm Tony Frochdel, I'm with Pantera Engineering. Of course, we've been involved with this project from the very beginning, I know someone to this board, remember this, Betsy, from the very beginning when we did the master plan, what's going on out here, and yes, we understand, this is, there's sort of a moving target here on what could come in. We're asking for the conditional use for this one retail space. We feel like, based on what that use is going to do, how we have it laid out, there was some concern from the Planning Commission about one of the conditions being to sort of minimize pedestrian crossings of the drive-through space, and this is in, it's kind of, we tucked it back in the corner, the drive-through's on the perimeter of the site to eliminate crossings, as far as, I mean, but there's all, we want people to get in there, whether it's walking or driving. So, what I would also say is, yes, the traffic engineer did look at it, he had a few concerns about some crosswalks and a couple other comments about getting folks over from the Aldi site, we're addressing those as part of the land development plan. We also understand that when the next use comes in, whatever that looks like, we're going to go through this process again. If it's a drive-through, we'll be having this discussion again, will it work, how does it work in conjunction with this, you know, with this use? We're not having that conversation now because it might not be a drive-through use, it might be something completely different, it might be some retail space that doesn't have a drive-through. So, we don't, it's kind of hard to anticipate, like, how far in the future do we have to look? So, we're asking the board to consider this conditional use with the plan that we presented. The Planning Commission did bring up the issue of the exit where the ADA spaces are, and we're looking at that, we'll address that as part of the land development plan, we understand that's a concern, and it's, and it's a good one. So, just thought, might take an opportunity to kind of let you all know, we understand that there are questions, and this is, it's, you know, the master plan part of this was meant to be a little bit flexible, because we don't know what all those uses are, but we do have an opportunity to bring something in that's new to the community, and just kind of want to keep moving forward with it. So, that's all I have, so, thank you.
So, one of the things we can do for the conditional use hearing is we can actually have Rob Watts, our traffic engineer, come, because I think you have some questions, and it might be good that he's here to answer those questions and provide some advice to you as well. So, I can reach out to Mr. Watts and ask him to be at that meeting.
Please, Jim.
Yeah, because part of, part of my concern, too, is I don't want, if you're saying that we can, this is enforceable, we don't want to keep responding to, like, resident consumers, sort of like complaints around some of these issues. And we're saying that this would just be for this entity, we would not, if a new sort of person came in afterward, whatever conditional stuff is happening now, that would not be enforceable, or could we make that enforceable?
I would think that is in line with the health, safety, and welfare, that you could have this tied specifically to the Kava restaurant based on their business model, that you cannot have a order-window kiosk sort of setup if another drive-through were to come in at a later date, that it would need to be pickup-only to go. An alternative to that is if a Dunkin' Donuts or something came in that would require a conditional use process all over again?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can talk about that, and we can talk with the applicant about what they're, they're willing to agree to as well. I mean, obviously, you can pose conditions, but if they don't like them, they're gonna, they can challenge that, so. Can I ask a quick question of Mr. Frochdel, which is, in terms of the traffic study then, what did it assume as to those two other parcels? Did it assume that they would be drive-throughs, or did it assume that they would simply be a retail establishment?
Well, for the, for the overall traffic study, it assumed that they were going to be drive-through established restaurants, but for the immediate study, by immediate study, I mean, when they looked at the actual layout that we have shown here, all they considered was what's shown here, the twenty-five-hundred-square-foot Kava. Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Okay. Supervisor Whitman.
Yes, I'm going to get philosophical here. So, first of all, actually, actually, first, I need a clarification on the drawing. I'm seeing at the, towards the, at the top, where the little arrow is right now, says Kava, the words, and that, thank you, that looks like a building to me, okay, right? It is a building, right? And I'm seeing the drive-through window there, but the doors in the back of the building, that would be for employees, I'm guessing, that's?
Uh, the, the main doors.
The main doors of the restaurant.
And who would use those main, oh, somebody could order online and walk through and pick it up?
Well, there's, there's seating in the restaurant.
Okay.
It's still a restaurant, you can still go there, there's a patio with some outdoor seating there.
So, that's what I was gonna, so that area that is then?
Blank space, what is that?
Seems to be south of?
It's, yes.
The Kava, that is an outdoor seating area?
Uh, this, this is, this is an outdoor seating area.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's cool, okay, so, well, I was actually looking, okay, where the arrow is right now, that, I see, white space, what's that big white space, right there?
Future building.
It's, it's big white space, we do, we do not know what's going to go there.
It's a future building site.
They'd like it to be a building site, yeah, I mean, could be parking, depending on what goes on in the other part of the site.
Okay, so, there was some wording about it, this place being walkable. Okay, so they can, they can go into the restaurant, okay, now, I, I understand that, but they have to order outside. But I think it's, so, there's, can walk to, right, and want to walk in.
Okay.
So, I'm assuming that it refers to the former, that you can walk to the restaurant and get some food. It's certainly not a place where people are going to walk around for their laps in the morning or for recreation or, right?
Yeah, that, that's correct. This, this crosswalk here leads to the main access aisle there that ties in, that actually wraps around, it's ADA accessible to Atherton Street, and it will be accessible to future development behind it.
Oh, okay, so, this is a model that I, I guess the fact that they have a restaurant where people can sit inside, that's okay.
I think the, the walkability is that the entire site in the mixed-use districts are intended to be walkable, not just this one restaurant, right? What makes this different is that we're looking at a, it's a master plan community, but there's only two pieces to the master plan right now. There's Aldi, and then there's Kava. So, it's a little disjointed in that we're not seeing all the possible things that are going in there, and how it all ties together. But the intent of the zoning district, Jenna, correct me if I'm wrong, is that it's supposed to be a walkable zoning district, it's supposed to be mixed uses.
Okay, so, and we're not seeing any vegetation at this point, or will we on this site, is there not?
Yeah, there'll be perimeter plannings around the wall area, you, you, the board had actually approved that as part of the last plan that was supposed to go here, which is no longer happening.
Oh, right.
In fact, in the, since that plan has been approved, of course, the wall has been constructed, you've seen that, there are some of those perimeter plannings are in already, and there will be more scheduled, so. And that's one of the conditions, that headlights are not, you know, intrusive on neighboring residential areas, that's what those, that's what those plannings will be used for.
So, I think what I'm trying to get my head around here is that this is, this is model allows for more customers without having the traditional required parking spaces per customer, because their, customers are just being processed through at a much quicker rate than?
It's a restaurant as well, it's a sit-down restaurant as well.
Right, but the, it looks to me, I'm just, again, I'm really being philosophical because it's something that I don't find particularly attractive to have it focused so much on moving traffic, and it's probably not even my point to say it, or not even appropriate to have this conversation right now.
I, I think it's not focused so much on moving traffic, Tony, tell me if I'm wrong, but I think right now, we're showing this because this is the conditional use, so this is the piece of it that you're looking at, which is that drive-through use. They still have all the required parking that they have to meet.
Yes.
There's plenty of parking on that site because Aldi also has parking, and there was some talk at some point that there might be some shared parking, but there's still the traditional parking, it's just that right now, we're very focused with the conditional use conversation on the drive-through.
The drive-through component, yes.
So, that's why you're seeing the cars and the discussion point.
You will see more of the landscaping and your typical requirements when the land development plan is ready.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I guess I have, I'm having that knee-jerk, I'm not trusting this drive-through aspect. Have I?
Yeah, just.
One of the things that, this is going to work for Kava because their throughput is going to be very fast. They don't need, I, I, they might need a squat box, maybe a squat box, basically say, hey, my dear, this is my order number?
I love it.
Because if you eliminate squat box, and you eliminate any signs there as part of the conditional use, that's going to basically make it so that no other fast-food restaurant is going to be able to come into the space without getting that changed. So, that can be a potential. Again, our main concern is people coming out here and, and just this agenda.
Oh, sure.
And we didn't know that there was two other, we didn't know that there was two other drive-throughs going in, so.
There may be two other drive-throughs going in, there's nothing proposed at this point. All we're talking?
They're showed to have the meat requirements.
All we're talking about at this point is this particular use, right? We're only talking about Kava and this drive-through use. So, it is disjointed because you've looked at a master plan that has things that may or may not happen on them, and we're sort of planning slightly in a vacuum, we're planning for this one use while we don't know what's going to happen sort of around it.
Supervisor Abrams?
This is another question, I have no idea what the answer is, but in addition to the existing challenges for pedestrians or people parking, we've got Uber drivers and other driving. you've got Uber drivers and other driving companies that are picking up food. And if they have encounter a blockage in the places they're going to, that raises their cost and inconvenience to the customers. Is anything ever done for for that kind of thing?
Yeah, I think that we would consider that traffic as part of just the general pickup traffic flow at the site.
But I mean, 20, 30 years ago, we didn't worry about whether there were these other drivers coming in. But now there are many of them, and you don't want to confuse them and cause an extra wait time.
Supervisor Rob.
So Jenna, I know you have to get out of here, and you've you've been held hostage.
I give Mark a heads up.
But continued use, my concern is once we get past allowing this. I sat on that, I won't even say board, for Chick-fil-A. And Chief was there when we had the safety issue that we didn't even put together, talking to corporate. And the more we thought about the answer to the traffic that we now have is more than a nightmare, where people are turning left, we put up signs, we had our police officers there. My concern, I wouldn't like, if possible, not only having the traffic engineer there. I want Chief's input because we're talking safety. Not only maybe a smaller venue, but we have to have that safety component. And Chief can tell you, putting his officers out there was not only for our residents' safety. It was our officer's safety. And continue right now, we're still having that issue. Whether we say continued use. So if we're I'm going with our recommendation from our planning and really taking a look at their concern. And along with the board's concern, once we make that decision, this was this was a wake-up call. Chick-fil-A was a wake-up call for us, you know, what we could do, what we couldn't do, what we thought was in place that wasn't in place. I hate to go through that again. Because trust me, trying to get everybody on the same page, our residents who didn't feel safe, for our board thinking we made the right decisions. We thank you for your expertise on this as we move forward. And I bet see, we're going to be looking to you.
No, I I will say, I mean, my concern about this site is very different from Chick-fil-A.
Okay.
Chick-fil-A is in part, no disrespect, a PennDOT issue. Because if we've been able to do things differently, we could have changed that. I'm just worried about the internal flow of traffic. So that's why I kind of went up the street, just in the neighboring property, to talk about the areas of internal flow.
Okay.
Yeah, and and I think, you know, we may have to think about how we look at that for the next two developments. What are those end up being in this particular area as well? So that's something we can talk about, the staff and the traffic engineer. I I just think we, when we tell people to do traffic studies and we set out our standards and they do them, it's more based upon how those how their traffic is going to use our streets and less based upon internal traffic flow in a development. Otherwise, the colonnade would have been developed differently.
Okay, true.
Talk about internal traffic issues that are not affecting our township roads, right? But we just don't look at that because it's not really our problem. I mean, I say that in a cavalier way. It's not. They're it's private property and they should be able to set it up. But our residents expect us to look at that as an issue because they're the ones who then have to deal with sitting in line somewhere or dealing with it. So I don't think it's a complete, I mean, yes, the pedestrian issues, that that's a potential safety issue. That's we've teed that up. But I don't think it's the same as a safety issue we have at Chick-fil-A where PennDOT's answer was, we'll just tell them they can't turn left. And that really works, as in not.
Yeah.
In any situation, not just there. Go out College Avenue at Bennett Pike and watch people take make the left-hand turn into the sheaves where they're not supposed to.
Yep.
Well, I appreciate all the the lovely discussion, and it seems like, again, we're we're at this point going to be making a decision for Kava. And the other things can sort of like come later. So first come, first serve. I guess we can probably move you through anyway. But we had a motion on the table.
Yeah, I did.
So can we actually vote then to approve the motion that's on the table? So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes, abstentions, motion carries? Take her. Last one, just a 2025 Planning Commission work plan.
Thankfully, our planning cushion chair did a lot of my legwork on this one. We have up here, we just summarize the Planning Commission 2025 work plan. We have our routine activities, which you see a lot of those, land development, subdivision plan reviews, et cetera. Anything referred by the board supervisors. So you did refer back the rezoning request for Douglas. So that kind of went back and forth a lot in 2024. And items for focus in 2025, again, we want to get the short-term rental regulations off and running. We have tangible housing ordinance. That is another big one. Douglas is still remaining out there as well. Always providing education to ABCs. We're looking at that, not just for patent township, but all of the planning commissions and elected officials in center region. We mentioned the North Atherton Corridor study. So we did sit in on a DCD presentation yesterday on some of their grant programs that will possibly help with that. And then you will see a lot of us with the center region comments of Plan 50 this year. A lot. You'll be tired of seeing it at some point. That is all I have.
All right, any questions, lingering questions, Jenna?
Thank you, Jenna.
You're welcome.
All right, take care, Jenna.
Yes, Jenna.
All right. I I am fine continuing to plow through some of this stuff unless we have individuals who care to take a quick break.
We're in the homestretch, I will tell you that.
Oh, I know. I'm trying to be respective, respectful. Anyone that keep going?
I'm good. Keep going.
They'll take a break before you go in that consecutive session so that we can.
Got it.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
So 3C is what we'll jump back to.
All right, back to 3C. All right, Center County Long Range Transportation Plan.
So as you may remember, Ms. Ann Messner, who's in the audience tonight, she came to talk with you at your November 13th meeting to talk about the Long Range Transportation Plan update. And she gave us a list of questions that she wanted us to consider further. So what staff did, myself, Michelle Marrow, and Susan Wheeler sat down, and we brainstormed answers to the questions, which I've provided in the agenda item and I'll go through here. And the goal tonight, and Ann is here in the audience, if you have any questions for her, if she wants to provide any questions back to us. The goal is to formulate some responses to send back to the CCMPO. And we have some possible future projects as well that they can then consider as they work on the update. So I'll start with our first, which is the key corridors in the township, and what are the major needs and issues and highways and bridges? So in discussing this, we've identified a couple, the first being Waddle Road and the Toftrees Avenue Corridor. This is exciting that we have the new traffic signal, but we have some real pedestrian challenges down there, huge pedestrian challenges down there. So we're looking at some pedestrian accommodations throughout the corridor. There's been some communication from residents in Toftrees wishing that they could walk to the sidewalk on Waddle Road. So we need to look at how we move folks safely through that corridor. Second one is also on Waddle Road, the big winner tonight, Waddle Road through Woody Crest. As you know, if you've traveled Waddle Road at any time of day, that area is very congested. And we want to look at long term, right? That's an area that's probably going to see some change in the uses along that stretch if people start selling homes and other things along there. So we want to talk about if there are any possible solutions to the congestion through there. Next is Valley Vista Drive. We know that we're looking at this as part of the Park Forest Middle School project. But is there a possibility that we want to remove the local limited access highway designation that was put on by the board in the 1980s? And then do we want to look at the intersections throughout that corridor? Right now, the limited access designation limits where you can enter and exit that roadway. Most of the area along there is developed, so I'm not sure there's a need for the limited access anymore because there's not many empty parcels left that would contribute more traffic. So we want to look at if there's a more effective way to move traffic through that corridor and, of course, into boroughs and township. And then Viro Boulevard, again, another congestion concern. This one being the timing of the traffic signals to Atherton Street really needs to be addressed. If you try to go through in the area by the Walmart, the TJ Maxx, it's kind of a bottleneck through there. There's some other roadway and stormwater management concerns, which we're going to work on through our own capital improvement plan later on in the next five years. So if you're okay with these answers or if you have questions, just let me know. Okay?
All good.
All right, second question, alternative transportation modes. This is bike, peds, transit, horse, and buggy ATVs. What are the gaps and capacity issues? So we have a couple that we identified, the first one being alternative pedestrian access to Brunel Road Park. This is something that Susan Wheeler has been working on. We're looking at, can we create a connected shared-use path system that would run from Toftrees through Cricklewood to Fox Hill, then off to Brunel Road? The Toftrees, Cricklewood, Fox Hill Road would be on-road, and then we're looking at, is there a way to get through some of the lands out there? There's Penn State lands that are some private lands to get us over to the park. I think much like we see with the shared-use paths on Circleville and also Gray's Woods and Valley Vista, there are folks that are commuting that way, so we want to provide some safe access for them as well. And then the other one is safe pedestrian access on Atherton Street. We have sections where we're missing sidewalk through Atherton Street. That entire area is also very pedestrian adverse. It's also very bicycle adverse. It's not. How we we need to look at how we move folks through that area, especially if we have, you know, housing that eventually goes into patent crossing in the back. You might have people that want to be able to walk and access some of the resources that we have out there. So the discussion point there. Do you have any questions about any of these items?
I would just like to point out that I've walked to Park Forest a lot and asked people what they want, you know, what their concerns are and traffic, pedestrian traffic. I'm looking at Atherton as number one, that we're actually affordable housing. But yep.
Excellent.
And so that's really good affirmation here. Thank you.
Okay, so next question, emerging technologies, so new or emerging technologies to be deployed. So the first one, of course, is our automated speed enforcement cameras that we've been talking about, and also red light cameras at targeted intersections throughout, I know you're looking at me, Sue Tom, throughout the Atherton Street corridor. Obviously, both of these right now not authorized to be used in our area by the state. Tyler and I will be going to Harrisburg at some point this year to testify before the local government commission about the speed enforcement cameras. And I understand they're opening up another pilot in 2027 on the red light cameras. So I think we need to keep beating the drum of safety along Atherton Street and how we move folks through that corridor. And then the next one is just more rapid flashing pedestrian beacons at targeted intersections throughout the township. We have areas that are very unsafe for pedestrians to cross. I'm particularly thinking of Valley Vista, and I'm looking at Supervisor Rob right now. I think what we're going to find when we look at the traffic study for the school is that there are areas where we're going to need to put in some pedestrian accommodations to help folks cross.
Also, at the end of the street I, Sandy Ridge Road.
Yes.
It's a lot of traffic there.
The Valley Vista shared-use path gets a ton of usage.
Well, that that does, but people go from Park Forest now, they like to walk.
Yes.
Because there's a nice loop around from our road and then back into the school area, not into the park, sorry, Circleville Park. Yes, a lot of traffic crossing them.
And who would pay for those?
So it would depend, right? So it gets on some of this gets on the Long Range Transportation Plan. We can get some assistance with some of the funding for implementing things, studying things. There's also plenty, and I'll let Ann, she's getting up to talk because she knows everything. There's also plenty of funding opportunities available as well through the state.
We don't want to go all willy-nilly. Everyone wants one.
So I just wanted to point out a couple things in terms of backtracking a lot of the key corridors. I think this is a good list. I also think from in terms of the Long Range Transportation Plan, we're looking for kind of a priority from the municipality. So the work that you have for North Atherton Street Corridor that is in the works, I see some opportunities to actually expand the scope, to look at those connecting roads as part of that process. And together, that could potentially inform a much larger project that could be in the Long Range Transportation Plan. We have, you know, increasing costs and those types of things. And so we we are looking at projects that for the Long Range Transportation Plan are $2 million and higher. And estimates for new signals are roughly $500,000 to $800,000, depending upon the need. So very quickly, projects become $2 million projects. So I just wanted to kind of point that out, food for thought as as you think about what you'd like to say. Capital Improvement Program, I was glad to hear that because once you start documenting that also, if it's not in the Long Range Plan, it's also a line that's that you can point to for grant writing. And you can use that as, no, we're serious, we're committed, and we want to see some change. The other one I wanted to point out was funding in general. Funding is complicated when it comes to transportation. So there's there's roughly, I'm not going to use an exact number, but there's roughly eight pots of funding that we regularly work with. And generally speaking, that each pot has an assigned eligibility. And that means that you might have a road improvement project, but for whatever reason, it can't include sidewalk. Or you might have a bridge improvement project, but it can't include the adjacent roadway that's connecting to it. So a lot of times when we're looking at these projects, we look at the scope, and then we say, okay, well, we know we'll get this amount of bridge funds. We kind of have to wait for the highway funds to catch up when they're eligible to make this a real project. So that's partly why we look for these projects in terms of their general scope so we can kind of keep that in mind when the opportunity presents itself. And I don't want to jump ahead, but I'm going to. The Airport Connector concept, which is in the Long Range Transportation Plan and is getting some legs. We are looking at that as a possible project because there's quite a few stakeholders interested. But that project, in terms of its potential scope and cost, could potentially limit the available funds for Center County because we get a limited number of highway and bridge funds every year. So we also have to map it out, what that might look like, the reality of it. Now, there's always a possibility that we would go for discretionary funding. Don't know what that looks like in 2026, 2027. And that could then help us in terms of those larger projects. But there's always this give and take when we're looking at the county and trying to figure out what the priorities are. And last but not least, we do have a projects committee that is developing a screening process. So as municipalities come in and say, this is a project we want, the screening of that project is potentially going to prioritize it for future funding. We're not going to have that completed for this Long Range Transportation Plan just because of the timing, but that is something that will happen in the future also. So I didn't want to cut you off, but I just wanted to, you know, point out a couple things. So.
Elliot, you have a question?
No, I just think all those ideas are great, and we should not lose sight of them.
Okay, so our next question was, it's actually the airport access, a county or regional issue. For us, talking about this internally, we feel that we do need the direct access from the I-99, 322 corridor over to the airport. And for us, it's mainly the concern about the neighborhoods, right? We have all the residential neighborhoods. The chief can tell you what it was like when we had a presidential, the now president, visit us and having to stand on post, and people have restricted access at times, and it was a little difficult. So having that access way, I think, would be important to protect those residents. So having that access way, I think, would be important to protect those residential neighborhoods. And then also, if the airport is able to expand and grow in some ways or get more flights in, we're looking at that planned airport district and the zoning out there, and how does that complement the airport and what's going on around us? So I think that's, and I know I'm speaking tomorrow with the CBICC managers update, I have a feeling I'm going to mention this, but I also have a feeling Adam Brumbow is going to mention it from College Township, because we've had conversations. So I think that's something you're going to start hearing more and more, as you've indicated, of in the coming months. So, and then lastly on the list of questions was anticipated changes in land use or development. So we've identified redevelopments and new development along the Atherton Street corridor. And again, this is about how we manage ingress, egress, and congestion, because it's already congested through there. The planned airport district, which I also just mentioned, and then Toftrees West, because that's a future growth area for residential and commercial development. And then they asked us to come up with some future projects. So the first one ties into our concern about Waddles and Waddle Road and Toftrees Avenue with the pedestrian, pedestrian congestion. On Toftrees Avenue, we have a fair bit of people that are parking cars and then leaving to get on a bus and go to campus every day, because they don't have to pay to park on campus, and they do it on football Saturdays as well. So the discussion or the idea is that we would develop a multimodal park and ride lot in the Toftrees West area adjacent to Waddle Road. So that that park and ride lot would be a stop for CADA. We could also look at Megabus stopping there, and then folks could park there rather than being on Toftrees Avenue, which helps us build a connected pedestrian system because we can put, take parking away from one side of Toftrees Avenue, potentially put in a shared use path and have the connection over to Waddle Road. And I know one of Pam's concerns has long been the Megabus and where the Megabus is going to go. And having a place where both CADA and the Megabus would stop would make it more of a connected system for transit riders as well. So if someone is taking the Megabus, a student, a resident, whatever, they can hop on CADA to get there, get on the bus, and go wherever they're going. So that's something we kind of talked about here, and we think that's going to really do a lot to help that congestion along Toftrees. There's a lot of cars on Toftrees. And then we got all the parking in, and there's people that want to walk there. It's just kind of a mess. The next one was the connected shared use path system from Toftrees to Brunel Road Park. We've done some of this work already. We've done the work on Cricklewood. You've seen the idea for the shared use path there and the road diet. We have plans to start working on a shared use path design for Toftrees Avenue. We've been talking with the resort, if that ever comes in in the next year or so, about having them build a shared use path. Toftrees Avenue has interesting challenges. It has a slope issue on the one side, the resort side. It has what we call the trough system with the stormwater lovingly. So there's some challenges there that we need to look at, but having, again, that connected shared use path system really helps people not just get to our park on Brunel Road, but also folks that use that to commute. There are folks that I'm sure that are riding bikes to get to campus, and having safe passage for them would be a great addition. And again, would tie into our park and ride lot at Waddle and Toftrees as well. So those were our ideas. As Anne has indicated, she would like some idea of what your support is, your ranking, or if you have preferences on things, so that then we can submit everything off to the MPO.
You want those rankings right now?
I have two, I have two questions. I can't remember the details of the avenue improvement on Toftrees. And I know, I remember.
Navarro Wright Plan, yep.
Medians and stuff. But I'm thinking of the rule of thumb that cars parked along the side of a road actually reduce speed on that road.
Yes.
But I know then there's not room really on the other side of the side.
Yes.
Between the parked cars and the land for a multi-use trail.
There's also a lot of site distance issues along there as well, so that's a lot of what we need to look at through there. And the Navarro Wright Plan did look at some of that, yes.
Okay. Yeah, but yeah, vertical and horizontal. Got that? Okay. And then I like the idea of the park and ride lot at Waddle and Toftrees, but the first question I had when I thought of that was the location of the Megabus now, which is, you know, the Walmart parking lot, that I think of as being much more accessible to a lot more people. It's certainly the way we have CADA now, but then a lot of people can walk from the Park Forest area or.
Right. I think the long-term concern, and Pam can speak to this better than I can, but I think the long-term concern is that there may be some more development in that area, and then the Megabus will go away.
Yeah, exactly.
And so we were looking for a better solution, I believe.
Right. We don't know.
We haven't.
It's a part of impact.
Yeah, we haven't seen anything.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I get that, so, but there's not any, okay. I was just wondering if there's a possibility of putting a lot there, but I think the one that you're thinking about would maybe even be larger than the one that's currently used by the Megabus. So you have a lot of commuters.
I mean, it's virgin land, so the nice thing is we could work with the developer perhaps to purchase the land, and then we could size it based on our needs.
Yes, and maybe expand.
Yes.
Okay.
And so I guess the request for like rankings or priority, should we do this by group?
That probably would be good to do it. By group?
I would say it's totally up, not to sidetrack you, but it's totally up to you as elected officials, what your priorities are. The long range plan has different components, so all of these could potentially inform the long range transportation plan. But if you want to submit a project request form, my suggestion would be picking one or two.
And those that don't necessarily have as many stakeholders involved, again, I get that a lot of this is a more sort of like regional effort, but for us specifically, Patton Township, we might want to focus on things that.
You could as part of your capital improvement program, but you could also say, hey, we want you to still consider these to the extent that you are able.
Got it.
So do you want them to rank within the questions themselves or just the future projects?
I think to keep it simple, I think future projects. But if there's something else that's emerging within the group that you feel should be as part of the list, the rest of it, I would put in anyway as feedback, because we will have other municipalities that will have similar, maybe not the exact, but similar ideas, requests, those types of things. So we want to take it all in for the long range transportation plan.
Supervisor Abrams.
This is my fault for not maybe keeping up with the whole thing we're asking here, but when's our deadline for getting these answers?
So they have to be submitted by March 14th. So we have one other meeting, but you're going to have that conditional use here at that meeting, so.
My thinking is that we should maybe schedule this topic specifically for one of the other meetings when we have a little more information.
And I guess the question is, we wouldn't, we don't necessarily have to vote on this. This is just like a consensus of what our priority is.
The only thing, and honestly, if you're okay with the answers that we gave you to the questions, right, those don't have to be ranked. So we can just submit those to the MPO. But if you want to look at the two future projects that we've suggested, and that would be the one you want to say, like, oh, yes, we think the shared use path needs to be our number one project because we've already started work on it, or, oh, no, we really think the other one should be, so.
Yeah, so we have those two, sort of like future project options. I'm good with the answers, responses to the, you know, questions above, if others are in agreement with that.
You could also submit both of the future projects for ideas.
Yep.
There's nothing, there's no limit, so that is also an option.
So as far as then future projects, A and B, is there, out of those two, a preference that the board has in prioritizing?
So I just want to point out that if, it depends on the timing, if we're going to have that shared use lot, then we're going to need to look at the improvement of Waddle Road. Because there's going to be, need more access, use of Waddle Road. And we've been talking about Waddle Road for years.
Yeah.
So even before you were, it was the antramania.
Yep. One of the things we're looking at with the Waddle Road-Toftrees intersection internally is a staff. We're looking to get some money to see what we could do pedestrian-wise, looking to see if we can get an Arlie grant to help us figure out how to do the crossing at Toftrees to Waddle, to get people onto the sidewalk over there.
And bike lanes.
Yes.
We heard a couple years ago from bike people about getting their, goes back green.
Yep.
Adhesive, really contrasting color for bike lanes. And that was several years ago.
So I'll get us started. I would prefer my priority for the future project is A, just the park and ride and Megabus.
That includes installing all the other things that are needed, if we have that, like lighting, so that people could see where they were going, walking, bus, say, if it's six o'clock in the morning in December. And there are probably other issues too. I mean, you want to have, make sure that the park and ride lot is safe.
Yep. So we, yeah, those nuances can definitely be discussed in the future, but for right now, just for the sake of time, for A and B, is there a preference that people have?
I just have a question on the Valley Vista, since we're moving into the school. Do we have a deadline? How far are we ahead on the school?
We have not received any word from the school where we are with that process.
Okay.
So I haven't heard anything. They were working on the traffic study. I was expecting first quarter of this year, we'd probably see the traffic study to have that reviewed, but I haven't heard anything.
Yeah, that's why I was looking at the Valley Vista Drive piece. And to speak on the Megabus, my concern is because CADA has cut so many roots in Toftrees, would this help to bring back?
CADA is very interested in this. I had a conversation with Dave Rochelle and mentioned that we were, you know, talking about it, and I think he would like to talk about it further, because I think it helps their operations as well.
Yeah, since they were doing all the discontinuing, a lot of the rootings, that is major to even, you know, look into that, but if that's the case, okay?
Okay. So again, A or B?
Yes.
We're not, we're not wedded to anything.
Yeah, I lean A.
Lean A.
A.
Seems like we're leaning A.
Sounds good.
And it seems like we like what's above, the responses.
So we'll submit A as a future project. We can also submit B, just to keep it in.
Yeah.
We'll note that A is our, the board's preference.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting.
Hanging in there.
Oh, sure, sure. Oh, and I have to thank Chief Jolly for sitting through a stakeholder meeting. We had a couple other police departments, and I thought it was very helpful, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We are shifting. We still have people in the audience. Are they here to talk?
No, we're good.
Okay. All right. Public safety.
All right, thank you. Yes, yeah, to get through this as quickly as possible. So December, a busy month for the police department. We stopped 104 cars, wrote eight tickets, handled 36 criminal arrests. Under department notes, arrested a 37-year-old male for theft by deception and fraud. Bought an item from a store for $1,200, returned an empty box. So kept the item that he bought, put some weight in the box, resealed it, and made a return, and the store found it later, so we caught up with him. 22-year-old male was arrested for possession of a small amount of marijuana and paraphernalia. During a domestic dispute, our officers noticed the drugs and paraphernalia in a common area. 51-year-old male was arrested for simple assault and terroristic threats. It was related to a domestic dispute where the male had actually threatened his wife with a knife. 17 arrests were made for retail theft, three for driving under the influence. We served five warrants of the 11 we attempted, and we did 19 vacation home checks. In December, we did use Forrester in one incident, retail theft incident at a township store. Female was taken into custody, handcuffed behind her back. She was able to wiggle one of the handcuffs off of her wrist, and she attempted to flee the store. So our officer took the female to the ground where the handcuff was reapplied. She then remained compliant throughout the remainder of the interaction. No injuries to her or to our officer. However, she was charged with retail theft, resisting arrest, and attempting to escape. Community relations, Officer Tuskovich spoke with students at Park Forest Middle School about appropriate 911 usage. Officer Bardzel has done a nice job conducting, he actually organized a meeting and conducted meetings with the loss prevention workers from various stores located in Patton Township. Officer Brooks provided a police presence at a winter craft market held at the center. Officer Borowski, Officer Tuskovich, and myself attended the third annual Heroes and Helpers event at Target. And this year, we had 15 kids from the Center County Youth Service Bureau Shelter and also the Independent Living Programs who participated. Huge thank you to Target. They gave $150 to each of the kids to shop in their store. They have a grant that we've worked with them over the last three years here to get. But especially a huge shout out to Nicole Beach, who's the Target Loss Prevention Worker, who just made it really extra special. She made hot chocolate waffles and had gift bags set up for the kids when they came. So it was a really, really nice event. We have a photo here, just in a little bit, I'll show you. Officer Tuskovich conducted a safety assessment and a stay-put drill for the after-street program at Gray's Woods Elementary. And then our officers yearly have done this, but this year we participated in help with track and control for the Nittany Valley half marathon that cuts through Fox Hollow and out of Fox Hill roads in our township. Our officers, under department activities and training, attended tactical response team training. Officer Snyder and Graff did their two days of training. Graff was deployed on a couple of different occasions, did a sweep at the Tyrone Area High School, and then on two traffic stops for drug detection. He did alert on one of the vehicles, and a gabapentin pill and paraphernalia were recovered as part of the search of that vehicle. I assisted with lieutenant interviews at Ferguson Township, attended a pre-bid conference for our records management system, request for proposal. We're making some good progress on that now. The bids from the vendors are due back to us next Friday, so we're hoping to get a few bids to have a couple of different companies to look at and hopefully move forward with a purchase for that system, hopefully by the end of the year this year. And as a reminder, we do have grant money that we secured from PCCB through State College Burrow, so they have about $1.2 million to help us with that purchase. And then Anne stole my thunder, but I did meet with her, Lieutenant Jones, also from PSP Lockview, and I sat down with her and spoke about the long range transportation plan. Huge shout out to our crossing guards, especially a day like today, when the weather conditions are less than desirable. We really appreciate everything they do, but as you can see, Joe Wertz went above and beyond the last day before the Christmas break, dressed up as Santa out at Gray's Woods Elementary. And then we have Ricky Richards, who was at Douglas Drive and School Drive, dressed up as an elf. So, but like I said, these guys, they really enjoy doing this, enjoy the interaction with the students, and they really do a fantastic job. We really, really appreciate what they do, especially again, on days like today when the weather's so inclement. That's just a photo again of us with the, some of the kids that participated in the event at Target. Just a picture of the drugs and the paraphernalia that Graff hit on from that one vehicle we spoke about. A couple notes that we received from the public, one just from an individual who had put in a vacation home check while they were out of the country for an extended period of time, appreciating the watchful eye kept by the officers on their residence. And then one from an individual who, we responded to an alarm at their home, and he mentioned that he could see on the cameras that a few officers had responded, so he appreciated the response and the efforts that it put forth there. Lastly, we have our record list of calls for service. In December, 500 total. That's down just slightly from the 539 that we handled in November. 86 were school checks, and 70 were health and safety EMS assists. And then the last thing I want to mention, so just for individuals who used to be signed up for the Code Red, so the emergency alerting system that we had in Center County, as of midnight on December 31st of 2024, they no longer use Code Red in Center County. They switched over to Alert Center, starting on January 1st. So folks who were signed up for the Code Red should have received something from the county of letting them know about this switch. However, I'm trying to get the word out as much as possible. So Center County 911 and EMA put out this flyer that we have up here. There's a QR code. You can text ALERTCENTER to 67283. There's also a website that you can enroll. Ask you a lot of different questions that can help benefit if you do call in or need help in an emergency. Some of the questions that they ask will be preloaded, and the dispatcher will have access to those. Color your house, color your vehicle, different things like that. So it's kind of a pretty advanced system. There also is a Smart 911 app. There also is a Smart 911 app on your phone or mobile devices, you could also download and have it on your phones, so. Just wanted to get that information out there. Sophie has done a couple social media blasts about this. Information is on our website, and she'll also put it into the Patent Pulse edition for February, so that is all I have.
Questions, reactions? The grant that you have in collaboration with Target, where's that money coming from? Target Corp?
Target Corporate, yeah.
Okay, just making sure. Tell us some external grant and where we are praising Target.
It's all been done internally, and in fact, actually, it's done through the Youth Service Bureau, is actually the one that applies. We just supply the police officers to help the kids shop, so. We really have nothing to do with the grant, it's between Target and YSP, so.
Got it. All right, well, thank you. Okay, well, we have reached the portion of the meeting, I believe, that.
Consent.
Oh, consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor to approve the consent agenda, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays, any abstentions? Motion passes. So we need to break for executive session.
Managers report.
I will actually not, I have a written report, but due to the lateness of the hour, I will not say anything else.
Is there anything important needing to be shared?
Reports and so forth, just usually, because once you guys break, CNET's done. So when you break your executive session, or I should say, adjourn to executive session, the rest of the public meeting is over.
Yes.
So if you have any committee reports to give.
Any feedback?
No, Chief stole my thunder, so, thank you.
Okay, well, we will break. Wait, what?
Motion to go into executive.
Motion to go to executive session.
Motion, do I, or motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nays, abstentions? Our motion carries, we are in executive session.
So CNET, you can pack up and go.